Good evening, I'm Allen Joe Wenzel, Mayor of Winston-Salem. And tonight, based on adopted city procedure, I've determined that it's not possible for the City Council to be in this room physically. Therefore, all council members will be participating virtually. Mayor Protem Burke will be participating by phone. May we have the City Secretary call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Burke. Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of City Councils comprised of the following items. There are five rezoning petitions, there are four items related to general obligation bonds. There's an item regarding the North Carolina League of Municipalities 2020 City Vision Conference, and an item related to the City Code. Zoning petitions and bond items are listed as public hearings. When these public hearings are called, persons will be given an opportunity to speak virtually. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the opponents and the proponents will be each given 15 minutes for presentation and then three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, the public hearings will be closed and the council will, of course, consider the item. Due to a recently adopted state law, written comments will be accepted on the public hearing items until 7:00 PM, May 5th, that's tomorrow. Individuals who would like to submit written comments may submit those to the City Secretary's office at sandrkk@cityofws.org. These written comments will be forwarded to the mayor and the City Council, and if a member of the City Council, appropriate member, based on the written comments could, if they desire, make a motion to reconsider the item at a subsequent meeting, should they desire. Meeting is being televised live tonight on TV-13, will be replayed on Tuesday at 9:00 AM and again Wednesday at 9:00 PM. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of previously meeting, previous meetings are always available online at www.cityofws.org, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Ms. Kenny, may we have the first item, please?
Item Z1, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Clifford Wilson from RMU-S to MB-S. Property is located at the southeast corner of South Main Street and Barber Street, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Councilmember Taylor, do you wish a presentation on this one, or are you ready to present?
Mayor, I don't need a presentation, I'll just make some brief comments. This particular rezoning request would change this property from residential multifamily with unlimited density to neighborhood business special use. The petitioner has agreed to eliminate several of the uses in order to have it rezoned. It's my understanding, for those who are interested in knowing what's happening here, that petitioner is interested in opening a salon or restaurant or facility. Due to COVID-19, we did, we had to postpone the neighborhood meeting, but I have been in close conference with the Neighborhood Association President and the neighbors, and there are no concerns at this time. So, I would, one, move for approval of the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3432.
Thank you, sir. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember McIntosh, I believe. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, I'll move forward with the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
We're not supposed to have a public hearing closing?
You're exactly right, Councilmember Larson, thank you very much. I will ask if there's anyone who would like to speak, no one has signed up. So I will close the public hearing, and then move forward with the vote. Thank you, Councilmember Larson.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, you vote yes. Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. We'll now go to item Z2.
Item Z2, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of City of Winston-Salem for property owned by Kenneth and Betsy Carish, from AG South County Zoning Jurisdiction to AG Winston-Salem Zoning Jurisdiction. Property is located on, property is located north of Patsy Drive, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. No one had called in to make arrangements to speak at this public hearing, therefore I will close the public hearing, subject to the new rules and regulations I just mentioned. Again, I recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. As you heard, this is a simple routine request to reclassify the property from Forsyth County Agricultural District to Winston-Salem Agricultural District. The mayor and the council recalls that this property was voluntarily annexed in January of 2020, and this rezoning just pretty much completes the process triggered by the recent annexation. So, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3433.
Thank you, sir. Second, Councilmember McIntosh, any discussion? All right, we'll move to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Now, that is unanimous, thank you. Item Z3.
Item Z3, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Ray and Sally Edwards Investments LLC from HB-S to LB to GB-S. Property is located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, south of Bridgeton Road, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
No one had called in to make arrangements to speak at the public hearing, so therefore I will close the public hearing, again, subject to the rules we just discussed. I'd recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. Very briefly, item Z3 proposes a zoning, a zoning change for the property from limited business and highway business special use to general business special use. On February the 27th, I hosted a community meeting with the petitioner. It's my understanding that the petitioner is looking to build an indoor storage facility at this location, which is greatly needed for the neighborhood. There were some residents that showed up, they had a few concerns about buffers and landscaping, but all of those concerns have been addressed by the petitioner, and I feel really comfortable with moving forward with this project. So, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3434.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think Councilmember McIntosh, again. Councilmember, I am advised that Mr. Tom Tillis is on the line, Mr. Tillis represents the petitioner in that regard, so, Mr. Tillis, I will recognize you if you'd like to make comments. Can you hear us? Apparently not, and is there any further discussion of Councilmember Taylor's motion?
No further discussion this time, Mayor.
All right, I'll go forward with the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous, thank you, Councilmember Taylor. We have item Z... Four.
Item Z4, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Challenges of 2020 Fishery Incorporated from GB in RS7 to IP-S. Property is located on the north side of Goldfloss Street, between Barb grave Street and Glendale Street, located in the southeast ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Again, I don't think we have anyone waiting to speak on this item, so I will declare the public hearing closed, and we'll recognize Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. For those who aren't familiar with this particular location, this is a petition from Carter G. Woodson School to change the zoning of an on-site building from general business in RS7 to institutional and public special use, for school purposes, obviously. I had the opportunity to partner with Carter G. Woodson to host a community meeting on March 3rd. There was no one who showed up to the meeting in opposition. I just want to take a brief moment to thank Hazel Magg and Daniels and the staff of Carter G. Woodson for their transformative approach to the neighborhood. The school has been a good neighbor and a good partner to the community, and they've transformed the lives of hundreds of young people. With that being said, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and two, W-3435.
Second?
Second.
Councilmember Clark and Cipio, a second. Any further discussion, Councilmembers of this rezoning petition? If not, I'll go to the roll call. Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
And that is unanimous. Councilmember Taylor, you're working pretty hard tonight.
Thank you, appreciate all your help.
Item Z5.
Item Z5, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Burger King Corporation, number 1283, from HB MLKO to HB. Property is located on the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Fifth Street, located in the east ward. Planning Board recommends approval of petition. Item continued from the November 6, 2017, and the January 2nd and April 4th, 2018 City Council meetings.
Councilmember Cipio, I believe, has a motion to continue this, I'd recognize Councilmember Cipio.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the petitioners have come forth again, and we would like to continue this until our next council meeting. So I'd like to move that item Z5 be continued until the City Council's June 1st meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, second to motion, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Clark. I would just like to say to them, this is going on, I think, over two years now, and obviously, it's being used now, I've eaten there. But I think, one way or the other, these people need to fish or cut bait here, and I'll vote for it tonight, but I think next time, we need to take care of this. I think two and a half years is plenty of time for somebody to work this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark, well said. All right, those in favor of the motion to continue, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Oh, thank you, that's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, item Z6.
Item Z6, Consideration of Items Related to General Obligation Bonds.
Which have been talking about these for some while, Council, as you know, I'm going to ask our Chief Financial Officer, Lisa Saunders, to make a brief comment about the actions proposed tonight. Ms. Saunders?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem Burke and members of the City Council. The following items tonight will complete the process for the city to issue 6,840,000 two-thirds general obligation bonds, which represent two-thirds of our net debt reduction that we can borrow every other year. We'll be issuing 65,505,000 of general obligation bonds, which is a borrowing from the 2014 referendum, which will complete the borrowing there, and the first borrowing on the 2018 referendum. The third financing is to refund $30,500,000 of our bonds from 2008, 2010, and 2012, with anticipated savings of about $2.4 million. The bonds will be sold, the A, the B, the C bonds will be sold by the LGC competitively on June the 9th. The D and E bonds will be sold by RW Baird on June the 18th. The first action tonight is to have a public hearing and approve each individual bond, and the second action will be a resolution to approve the financing. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Saunders? All right, thank you, Ms. Saunders, we've talked about this quite a bit. Do we have item Z6A?
Item Z6A, Public Hearing on Bond Order Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed 30,500 General Obligation Refunding Bond at the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
This is a public hearing, of course, and no one has signed up to speak in advance on this one, so I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve this issuance.
Move approval?
Second.
Councilmember Clark, second. Councilmember Adams and Cipio, any discussion? All right, those in favor, John Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. Z6B?
Item Z6B, Public Hearing on Bond Order Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed 1,840,000 obligation parks and recreation bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
All right, again, this is public hearing, we will list it out, and those that would have signed up to speak on this, I'll close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion to approve this bond.
Move approval?
Second.
Moves approval by Councilmember Adams, a second by Councilmember Cipio, any discussion? If not, those in favor, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke? Yes. Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that's unanimous. Z6C?
Item Z6C, Public Hearing on Bond Order Authorizing the Issuance of Not to Exceed 5 million general obligation street and sidewalk bonds of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Again, this is a public hearing on the issuance of these bonds, no one has made arrangements to speak, therefore I will close the public hearing, I would entertain a motion to approve the issuance of these general obligation streets and sidewalks.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Larson, second by Councilmember McIntosh to approve the issuance of these bonds, any discussion? All right, those in favor, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Item Z6D?
Item Z6D, Resolution Regarding the Issuance of 6,840,000 two-thirds general obligation bonds, Series 2028, 49,205,000 general obligation bonds, Series 2020B, 16,300,000 taxable general obligation bonds, Series 2026, 22,500,000 general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2020D, and 8 million taxable obligation refunding bonds, Series E.
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
And a second?
Second.
I'm at a motion by, I believe, Councilmember McIntosh, second by Councilmember Larson, to approve this resolution. Any further discussion of this resolution? If not, those in favor, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous, thank you very much. Item Z7.
Item Z7, Resolution Regarding the North Carolina League of Municipalities 2020 City Vision Conference.
As you know, this resolution, Councilmember, designates Councilmember McIntosh and Councilmember Cipio as our official voting delegates to the conference that will be held virtually this year. Councilmember Cipio and McIntosh, thank you for representing us. May I have a motion on this resolution?
Move approval?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Larson, moved. Councilmember Adams, second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Item Z8.
Item Z8, Ordinance Amending Chapter 34 of the City Code Regarding Licenses and Businesses' Regulations.
This does extend some of the expiration dates, and I'll ask our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Saunders, if you might just comment on this very briefly.
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council. Following, amends the code, Chapter 34, for beer and wine license and taxi cab license. The license originally issued from May 1 through April 30, and originally would have been due May the 1st. This will extend the date for beer and wine taxes to August the 1st, 2020. Taxi cab license will be extended from July 1st to payment not being made until September 1st, 2020.
Questions, Ms. Saunders? I would entertain a motion, Councilmember Clark, here, Chairman of the Finance Committee?
I'll move approval?
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Clark, second by Councilmember Cipio, I believe. Any discussion? Mr. Bessie got one in. All right, we'll do the roll call, those in favor, Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes.
Councilmember Bessie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cipio?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Burke? Councilmember Adams?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Aye.
And Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you, Council. That's all the items on our agenda. Any Councilmember wish to make a comment or be recognized? Briefly, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bessie?
Thank you. I'd just like to note, for those who are trying to follow the city's unusual meeting schedule, that all four committees are scheduled to meet virtually next week at their usual times. Folks who are particularly interested in our transit system may want to tune into the Public Works Committee, which is meeting, of course, on next Tuesday at 6 o'clock. It will be broadcast, as usual, on TV-13, and the city's website will offer a link to streaming it simultaneously. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cipio?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind our residents about mask the city. That is still very important, that we wear our masks when we're out in public, and I like to encourage people to follow that. I think we've been very, 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 very successful in maintaining the spread in our community, but we are not out of the woods yet. And I like just to encourage everyone to truly follow those instructions and mask themselves when they're in public.
Thank you, Councilmember Cipio. Any other comments, Councilmembers?
Adams, yes.
Councilmember Adams, yes.
Yes, again, I'd like to remind the citizens of Forsyth County and Winston-Salem to complete the census.
There you go.
I know that in the scheme of things, that it seems like nobody even remembers that we are doing a census, but we need to be counted. It's very important for resources and revenues and funding from the federal and the state that we get our numbers. We don't want to be left out. It's going to be difficult enough as it is as we move forward after this virus, and we will need all of the help that we can get if we can get our numbers and everyone gets counted. Please, you can do it on your phone, you can do it on the computer, you can even do a hard copy. Please be counted. Forsyth counts, hashtag Forsyth counts.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams, very, very important for our citizens to do that. Thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move?
Second.
Councilmember Clark, seconded by everybody. All those in favor, just say aye.
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 You want to oppose? We are adjourned, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.